Call to order, please. Can you all take your seats and come to quiet, please? Okay, we have a quorum. May we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Wyer?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Blatz?
Here.
Mayor Sticks?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
I think for the next 20 minutes.
Welcome all to the December 13th, December 13th, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Bill, will you please say a pledge?
Sure. Please rise. Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Approval of the agenda, motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Third.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. We will move on to presentation of the Historic Preservation Awards. And we have Brian Akins here to present. Thank you, Brian.
That's the shortest I've had to wait in a while. Used to 10 o'clock. Well, thank you, Council. It's always a pleasure to recognize our commissioners and also to recognize those people in our community that have had such an influence on us. At this time, I'd like to bring up Historic Preservation Commission Commissioner Gina McHatten to receive the HPC Annual Award for this. There we go. Hello, Gina. Gina McHatten currently lives in Ojai and has been on the city's Historical Preservation Commission since 2018. For the past 20 years, Ms. McHatten has lived in the downtown area of Ojai with her two children, Cooper and Hazel, and husband Todd. She believes that historic Ojai is first and foremost for its talented and engaged residents, the families and individuals who understand what a special place we live in. But Ms. McHatten is also aware of the importance that visitors have on keeping our community strong and their impact on our residents' livelihoods. McHatten believes this because she knows locals have made a choice to reside in this historically important rural town, open businesses here, and raise their children in a place that is unique, and because of its beauty and history draws interested visitors daily. Ms. McHatten developed an intense passion for Ojai's downtown historic core, home to the main merchant district as well as the many cultural festivals that Ojai hosts throughout the year. Her time over the past few years has been dedicated to researching and preparing an important presentation for the city on the development of an approved, on the development of a downtown historic district. McHatten was assigned to an HPC Ad-Hoc Committee in 2019 and committed her time to preparing an HPC presentation on creating this local downtown historic district, not approved. During this time, McHatten found decades of photos depicting townspeople, family, artists, merchants coming together in the OJ City Center, just as Edward Libby and other visionaries imagined it 100 years ago. She has discovered generations of locals with much town pride and spirit of community in Ojai through her research. In preparation for McHatten's presentation and research on the proposed downtown historic district, she learned everything she could about Ojai's history, as well as local, state, and federal preservation laws. Utilizing the dramatic shift to online learning during the pandemic, McHatten studied many areas of historic preservation through national organizations and educators. McHatten believes that the best decision made was to raise her family in Ojai, where they shop, eat, and socialize. She feels honored to be part of the Historic Preservation Commission, working to preserve this beautiful and important place, and she is dedicated to developing the Ojai Historic City Center. So, we congratulate Gina. Gina, do you have?
Thank you, thank you, everyone. And thank you for the outgoing council for being supportive and to keep listening and keep learning, because there's still a lot more to learn and a lot more to talk about. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'd like Mayor Sticks to come up and make the presentation.
I just want to say, Gina, congratulations. And it's clear when talking to you that you truly love our historically important rural town, and you work tirelessly to preserve its unique beauty and history. And it's so fun to learn from you, because your passion is contagious. So, congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Case in point, I always keep a camera in your pocket in case the others don't show up. Okay, and now we would like to bring Judy Polito up, if she would, please. Judy is Ron Polito's wife. We're happy to have her here tonight with us. Hello, Judy. Thank you for being here. And at this time, we are awarding two Lifetime Achievement Awards. Gina's was an annual award, this is a Lifetime Achievement Award. Gina's information was written up by Commissioner Jenny Prebor. Senior moment. And Cindy Convery has written, done this write-up for Ron Polito. Ron Polito was a California native and an Ojai resident for over 30 years. He was passionate about the historical significance and preservation of architecture in his development. During his career, he developed two key properties on Ojai Avenue that could have changed the entire nature of our downtown, if they had not been built under Ron's guidance. When development comes to a historic downtown, new construction should be developed in a manner that protects the integrity of the historic buildings and the property setting without altering the historic character. Ron followed these guidelines to develop properties at 300 Ojai Avenue, next to Libby Park, and 400 Ojai Avenue, next to Clough Vista Park. Ron protected the downtown's historic character and sense of place. Ron's motivation and inspiration came from the natural beauty of the Topa Topa Mountain Range. He used quality materials, including hand-painted tilework, ironwork finishes, and mature landscaping to create new buildings that blend with the original 1917 design of the downtown. He kept the new building's height under the Building Code maximum. Most developers seek to increase square footage to create more commercial space. Increasing building height allows for more square footage. Ron chose to keep the building heights under the code maximum, which is in keeping with the downtown feeling and protects our mountain views. He felt passionate that his work would enhance and frame the mountainscape, thereby creating an aesthetically pleasing entrance into downtown. Ron chose to place the parking behind the buildings at the 400 block of Ojai Avenue. This choice has kept the design consistent with the north side of Ojai Avenue, with buildings in front and cars out of sight, as opposed to the business development on the south side of Ojai Avenue. This decision was consistent with his design of maintaining his aesthetic and function at his buildings. Ron loved his career as a developer and a landlord, took pride in knowing each of his tenants and maintaining long-term relationships with the people he worked with. He wanted Ojai business to not just survive, but thrive. Ron's personal philosophy was to be well and do well, a philosophy that permeated every facet of his life. He treated the community of Ojai with kindness and circumstance, kindness and compassion. His hope was to positively impact all those who entered his life, no matter the circumstances, no matter the circumstance, which extended to real estate development, social justice, psychology, the environment, and arts. His positive impact on our downtown sets the bar for new development going forward, with the example to make better development choices, appropriate square footage, height, parking, and building materials for a balanced design and keeping with the surroundings. Ron's buildings and development projects have made outstanding long-term contributions toward furthering the protection and the cultural history of the Ojai Valley, but setting an appropriate standard for new projects going forward. So, Judy, the mayor will come forward and present your search.
Hi, Judy. Thank you, Judy, for being here to receive this in Ron's name and in his honor. Clearly, he was an extremely dedicated member of our community, and we continue to benefit from his forethought and care, and are so grateful for his love of nature and aesthetics and our dear Topa Topa Mountains. So, thank you and congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I would like to have Kathy Ray come before us. She is John, Jack, as most of us knew him, Fay's daughter. Hi, Kathy. I hear you have a lot of people getting together in the next couple of days down south, so we're happy that you were able to make it here with us. Okay. John "Jack" Fay graduated from Loyola Law School, and he and his march married in 1948, lasting 60 years, till she passed in May 2008. They moved to Ojai, the family moved to Ojai in 1951, along with most of the rest of his family. His father opened the Ojai Lumber Company. To some of you that have been here for a while, this is going to be a walk down memory lane. For other people, this is going to be, oh, wow. He, Jack, partnered to open the Loftman and Fay Law Office in Ventura, one he continued to work at until passing away as the oldest lawyer in California. He was really proud of that, wasn't he? Yes. After his move to Ojai in 1951, Jack quickly moved into volunteering within the city of Ojai, appointed to the Planning Commission, and serving as chair, trial by fire. Several years later, Jack was appointed the city attorney in the 1960s, from 1970 to 1982. He served on the Ojai City Council, serving as mayor three times for a total of five years, 1975 to 1980. Jack was president of the Ojai Civic Association for many years, supervised many capital projects in Libby Park, which were financed by the association. I'm told that Jack turned down a judgeship from Governor Reagan, so he could continue to work in Ojai, continue his work in Ojai. Jack also served on the Ojai Tennis Tournament Board of Directors for 35 years. While on the city council, keep in mind these, while on the city council, Jack worked closely with Jim Lobo, who, by the way, they butt at heads on politics. On several, I heard that laugh. I see them reaching over. Issues that came before the city council then are not that different from today. They worried about new businesses and whether they were right for Ojai. Go figure. They worried about keeping Ojai semi-rural and it not being overrun by subdivisions. No building here. Growth was a major issue at that time also. He felt that at the time, Ojai was made up of two groups, environmentalists and super-environmentalists. There are certain projects that Jack and Jim worked on that, at that time, that impact us to this day. Jack and Jim made it their job to keep in touch with the Fred Smith family, who owned the Smith-Hobson House, now City Hall and Ojai Landmark Number 23. They knew Fred Smith and his family wanted to donate the land, and worked with the family to make it happen. Even receiving, in receiving that fortuitous donation by these wonderful historic families, there was still taxpayer backbiting. Can you imagine? Why would we want to spend, to, why would we want this property? How much is it going to cost to maintain? Jack and then proceeded to spend $100,000, maybe $10,000 more, to fix up the property. They eventually made another key improvement in the council, moving forward with the construction of Little House, where help of Ojai has done such an amazing job in serving our seniors. Again, the naysayers asked why the city should aid the seniors. This is Senator Alex Cranston sent out representatives to review all of California's city halls. They came to Ojai, and after review, they were flabbergasted, saying, "This is the most unique city hall in the state of California." Sorry, I don't live in town. Another key project Jack and Jim worked on was the Ojai Downtown redevelopment. This time, the back of the arcade was terrible. I've seen the photos, you wouldn't have wanted to go there in the daylight. There was new state legislation that allowed the city to generate a development tax, which would go straight to the city coffers, enabling the city to redevelop decane areas and develop them into something in which the city would be proud to be used by the public. Take a walk today behind the arcade, and you too would agree, worth it. Once again, strong opposition was met. Folks felt the redevelopment agency would use their power to condemn and take private property. Jack and Jim met with anyone, and everyone, groups, boards, folks on the corner, and promised they would not condemn powers. I think I've met all those people in the last year. And now we have this beautiful area for all to enjoy. I can personally relate. Another major, major project was the new police station. At this time, the city had already voted to retire their own police and moved to the county sheriff for our, for our Ojai police. Again, fierce opposition arose with folks equally, split equally. Jack noted that once folks realized that the sheriffs had more capacity of staff, their own detective, their own lab, and larger holding facilities, the naysayers became supporters. Go figure. And Jack's time going east-west in the city of Ojai was a hot topic. You know where we're going on this? They solicited a solution from the public, who came up with seven, seven different solutions. They walked every one of the solutions, and it became apparent that losing residential housing to the north, or parts of Libby Park to the south, was not going to work. This apparently was to be the city's part of a freeway coming from Carpentaria to Santa Paula. It was a no-go. In closing, perhaps the farthest-reaching effect of a project Jack was involved in was when Jack worked with Ethel Percy Andrus, president of the National Retired Teachers' Association, and insurance writer Leonard Davis, in putting together the American Association of Retired Persons. Yes, AARP started here in Ojai. Remember that when you see their commercial? I always pointed out, no matter where I'm traveling, that started in Ojai. Jack first met Ethel in the council chambers, when he was representing a client to put in a mobile home park just below Grand Avenue. He read the room and withdrew his proposal. Ethel Percy Andrus was one of the folks opposing this project. The next day, she called Jack, and Jack became her attorney for the rest of her life. She asked Jack to meet with her and some other folks for dinner at the Ojai Valley Inn, I believe. It was six people, Ethel Percy Andrus, her assistant, Leonard Davis, who was the insurance writer, his two folks, and Jack, as Ethel's attorney. And the rest is history. Jack got his fees. Ethel never won for money, died with an estate of less than $100,000. And Leonard became a very rich man. Just remember that, insurance. As he was the only one authorized to write this new insurance geared to those 55 and over. Jack's wife, Marge, was a force for her own, serving in the city of Ojai. She was on the Planning Commission for 18 years, and very involved in the tennis tournament, volunteering at the museum, on the grand jury, and volunteered for other civic duties. So, Kathy, we thank you for being here to represent your father and your family. And I'll turn the time over to Mayor Sticks.
Hi, Kathy. Thank you for being here, Kathy, to represent your family and your father. And clearly, we understand how he was the oldest working lawyer in California, because his resume is a mile long. That is really impressive. What a dedicated member of our community, and we're so lucky. So, thank you so much for being here.
I just want to thank all of you. My dad loved this city, and he would be honored and humbled to have received this award. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you, Brian, for those presentations, really lovely.
Did you want to take one more picture with them up front?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I warned them.
Did you notice that we got the short version?
I know. I have to keep a longer. Does somebody lose somebody already? Grab him back.
Here.
We're going to be in it, too?
Yes.
As soon as it gets lost.
It's okay. Long details.
Thank you, very inspiring. Thanks, Brian. We will move on to commission reports. Any commission reports?
No commission reports.
All right, then, we will move on to public communications. And just a reminder, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We can agendize, though, for the future. So, we'll start with James Beck, then John Drucker, and then Brian Akins.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks, council members, Mr. City Manager and council. My name's James Beck, Director of Operations and Maintenance for Gold Coast Transit and proud resident of Ojai. I'm here in a couple of different capacities. As a resident, I want to thank the outgoing council members for their service to Ojai. It's much appreciated. And then as Director of Operations and Maintenance for Gold Coast Transit, I just want to thank Councilmember Haney for his years of service on our Board of Directors. Mr. Haney was an engaged board member. He served as our chair and vice chair. And as far as being a Director of Operations and Maintenance, he provided a lot of input on our Zero Emissions Plan for Gold Coast. We've been working with the city of Ojai as well. We appreciate your, your letter of support for our FTA grant we got for 12.1 million, which will deliver hydrogen fuel cell buses to Ojai in the year of 2025. And just a shout-out to your Public Works Department, a great group of people. I've been working with them. In conjunction, we'll be filing jointly for the California Air Resources Board Zero Emissions Plan. Randy, thank you so much. You're, you're an awesome director, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Mayor, James, just before you leave, I was going to say something later, but just because he's up here. James, this gentleman is the driving force behind zero emissions in Ventura County. And we need to applaud you for that, for leading it and championing it, and being the head of Gold Coast VCTC, any form of transportation in this community. This man, this gentleman, is leading us. Just, thank you, James. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next, we have John Drucker, and then Brian Akins.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Drucker. I'm an attorney here in town, but you all probably know me a lot better for my giant slingshot aimed at slowing down traffic on Creek Road.
No way.
Yes. At any rate, I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and a sizable number of Ojai residents, and I'm here to demand that Mayor Sticks recuse herself on closed session item number one, as well as all meetings, any meetings concerning the lawsuit filed by Simply Ojai on December 1st, for the following reasons. Ms. Sticks was the lone vote against the decision that this lawsuit seeks to overturn. Number two, in October, she gave a written statement demonstrating her bias against the project before even hearing any evidence. Number three, Ms. Sticks has well-known ties to the plaintiff in that lawsuit, Simply Ojai, as evidenced by her recent campaigns for mayor, being staffed by principals of Simply Ojai, Leslie Hess, and Tom Francis. Fourth, Ms. Sticks lobbied the city to intervene on behalf of Simply Ojai, mindful citizen, to obtain a state fire grant for almost $500,000. In sum, Ms. Sticks has a direct conflict of interest, rendering her incapable of defending the city in this lawsuit. Furthermore, we request that Ms. Sticks, for future purposes, disclose any and all associations with Simply Ojai, mindful citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Brian Akins.
Hello, current council and future council. I'm here both as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, also as the President of the Ojai Valley Museum, to take my last grand look at this council that we've been with for four to eight years. We were talking about when you came on in the Ojai Valley Inn and the NEF Lounge. Kind of started off a little rocky there, but we made it up. But, so I want to thank all of you and each of you for your support, for, especially for the museum, in making that move on the budget, and, and recognizing, too, that each of you were supporters of the museum, even in that be, it was only a disagreement on how it came, and I explained that to our museum board, so that they understood that you are supporters of the community and supporters of the Ojai Valley Museum. So, as president, I thank you. Ryan, I saw you were there Friday night, I just couldn't get to you. You were surrounded. Thank you. But, but again, thank you for, for your support over these years. I really appreciate that. And then, as Chair of the Historic Preservation, I want to thank you for your patience. Everything takes a lot longer during COVID and summers and elections and, and on that. I want to thank you for your support from January till, till now, for being, again, patient with us and trying to go out and take on a project that we felt was important to us. It has been 99.9% of the time a pleasure. And again, what you do here is, is unimaginable, the amount of effort that you not only come here for sometimes very long council meetings, but also on all of the other commissions that you go, not only are a part of, but also go and support. I see people on, at the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Commission or Council often there, too. So, again, thank you very much. And for those that are coming back, another fun four years. Except for Betsy. We're going to, we're going to make good juice of the two years together, huh? Thank you.
Mayor Sticks, I'd like to make one support comment. Brian, I wanted to say, I always will remember, sworn in, brand-new council member, and, oh, by the way, we're going to have special meetings over the Christmas holiday period, with all kind of heavy hitters from all over the country to argue things in front of us, that, you know, we were kind of on a steep, blurring curve to, to get on top of. And I just, I just want to, you know, it was, it was, retrospect, it was great to see the immediate dedication and, and concern of this community on things as important as historic preservation, right out of the chute. I'll never forget that. So, thank you.
Okay, well, you're welcome. We did have a betting pool going on in the very back corner, on who was going to vote for one. Odds were kind of sketchy, because you guys were, you folks were all new. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Weston, any public comments on Zoom?
No raised hands indicated.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'll, a motion to approve, but I'm going to pull H.
H, okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll move to approve consent items 1 through, 1A through G.
Okay, all right. Could we have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All right, Randy?
Well, I'm going to let the, because of the, the recount, I'm going to, I'd like the city manager, or the city attorney, to speak to it and just address the audience and the community, and to the best of his ability, explain it. And then after that, I'm going to request a couple of things from you, Mayor.
All right, Mayor, Council, and community members. The city understands that a recount request has been filed in the mayor's race, not in the other races on the ballot. The recount is processed through the county. We will get an outcome of the recount if the result changes. The county has a statutory timeline to do so. Must begin within seven days of yesterday, and then continue daily until the recount is completed, or until the people who are the proponents of the recount do not make the daily required payment of the, the county's fee to continue the recount. That does not affect tonight, however. There is no statutory basis to delay the election certification pending a recount, per Elections Code Section 10263, which in part states, "Upon the completion of the canvass and before installing new officers, the governing body shall adopt a resolution reciting the fact of the election and the other matters as enumerated." With the county certification result, the council tonight has a ministerial duty to certify the election results, as submitted by the, by the county certification with the seats as, as they are now. If a recount is completed, and that results in a change in the mayor's race, then the county will certify those results as new, recertified results. That will then in turn come to the city through the city clerk, to then come to the council, for the council to then recertify the election with that change in the mayor's race, at which point we would swear in the, a new mayor. And if the recount is completed and there's no change in the result, but the ballot, the number of- number of votes for or against changes, then we'll do a recertification, although there would not be a change in the mayor at that point. And that's per Elections Code Section 15632, which states in part, in lieu of the returns reported in the official canvas, upon completion of the recount showing that a different candidate was nominated or elected, there shall be entered the result of the recount in each precinct affected, which result shall, for all purposes thereafter, be the official returns of those precincts for the office, slates, or measure. Then, so that would mean that if the recount changes the result, then the county, the council would seat a different mayor. Any actions, however, that are taken under the current council and the new council with the mayor who would then be unseated remain valid. Under the apparent office holder doctrine, also known as the de facto office doctrine, which is a judicially established rule that acts taken by public officials while in a public office sitting under color of law by election are valid if otherwise comply with applicable law, even if the official is later found to no longer hold that office. See Supreme Court case from the state Marine Forest Society versus California Coastal Commission from 2005, the Citation 36 Cal 4th, 15455. And so the net effect thus is the council will certify the result tonight as presented by the county with the races as set in the certification documents. The recount will proceed through the county. If the recount results in a change, that will come back to this council to recertify, and then we will reseat. All actions taken between now and then remain valid, and there is no statutory basis to delay or pause certification. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
So Mayor, this reminds me of something that occurred eight years ago. Councilman Wirick and I were first seated, and Bill would start discussing something and 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 take five minutes, you know, to explain to the to us what he was trying to achieve, and it took me about five seconds to repeat to them what just occurred. So what just occurred? The mayor's the mayor until the mayor's not the mayor.
Right.
And any decision that the mayor makes while being the mayor is. And if the mayor's replaced, then the mayor's replaced, then the new mayor takes over. Thank you, Ryan, or thank you, Matt. So. Yeah, because it's interesting, there's a lot of there's there's so much stuff going on out there swirling around. But so Mayor, I have a I know that there's some form of order tonight regarding how we're going to leave this dais, but past councils have always taken the opportunities, the ones leaving, to thank the community for electing us and allowing us to be of service and to reminisce a little bit about the good things. Some people reminisce about the bad things. I remember when Betsy Clapp left, she read a five-page paper and just she was a really unhappy person that night. I don't think there's gonna be any unhappy people up here, but I would like to take a couple of minutes. James had some some things that we had accomplished over the eight years. Councilman Wirick has a couple of things. I have a couple of things. I'm sure Mr. Blatts has something. So if you could indulge us for maybe it is, looks like 25 to 7, maybe give us 10 minutes if it's your call.
Sure, of course. We have James and I both have some nice things to say about you, so what if we did that? And then after and then you get your award, and then do you want to speak after that?
I'd rather speak before because I don't want to be up there. The three amigos and the amiga, I don't want to forget our Souza. Yeah, if we just just give us a couple of minutes here. I think it'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, let's do it now.
A few minutes.
Okay, all right.
Let it be their call. Yeah, okay. Do you want to start?
I'm gonna let James start. He's got a couple of things that he was gonna share with us.
Put me on the spot.
I want to say something.
Up to you guys. They could say it. I'll do it later.
Okay.
Let's just do us.
Okay.
Yeah, well, how about I'll start with the accomplishments. We'll give the council members an opportunity to speak, and then that'll allow you to have your speech while handing them the plaques. So let's do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the staff and the community to council members Blatts, Wirick, and Haney. And as we started to think about the last four years for Councilmember Blatts and eight years for Councilmember Haney and Councilmember Wirick, we started to think about all of the things that that have that we've done. And and so I wanted to thank them and highlight some of the accomplishments that have occurred during that period. And so I'm just gonna kind of start with that. So Councilmember Blatts, over the last four years, we thank you for your accomplishments in which are numerous. You were a leader in the city's review of the sheriff's contract, which, working with myself and Councilmember Wirick, has left us in a position where we are working positively with the Sheriff's Department moving forward. And I think we're we're getting to a positive position with that project. Ryan was also critical, sorry, Councilmember Blatts was also critical in helping provide guidance. A lot of this is maybe behind the scenes, but in particular, Ryan was helpful in providing guidance when we went through our hotel tax increase, which, in my opinion, is still one of the the biggest projects that we have have done in the last few years that's gonna have positive impact for the city for many years moving forward. Ryan actually, no one probably knows this, but he wrote a frequently asked questions document for that project to try to help us communicate to the public with why it was important and not do so in such government speak. And I think his help was invaluable on that project. Ryan also, you know, I think on your gravestone, it will say, "Ojai Flow and Ojai Water Guru." So I think we thank you for all your advocacy in working on all of those water-related issues and Ojai Flow. Ryan has also been a key part of several city negotiation teams and was always a valuable person willing to dedicate his time to to helping us with that. And then lastly, a phrase that we use in law school is issue spotting. And Ryan's the issue spotter whenever he calls me and says, "You got something going on here," I stop what I'm doing and listen. So he's helped he helps us spot issues where things maybe aren't going right or where something is going off track. So so thank you, Councilmember Blatts, for your hard work for the community over the last four years. And so do we want to just start with that and then?
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Thank you, Ryan, for your four years of service. I have really learned a lot from you. You're very skilled at boiling down topics to their cores and synthesizing a lot of information in short order, so I guess that's the issue spotting. This skill has been so helpful to the city and to the council. Your love for your hometown is evident. It's really beautiful, and you're really funny, which is always a plus.
Well, thank you, first of all. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you. My family's had a spot up here for a long time, and there's not gonna be a Blatts on the city council anymore, so some of you can be happy about that. The I, you know, it's funny, I I feel like I I feel like I'm on year 16 in a row working for the city. Before I was on the city council, I was an attorney for the city on water-related issues. Before I worked with Bill, Randy, and Souza, I was actually meeting with them in closed session regarding water issues back before I was even on the council. And it's really been a pleasure. I'm very thankful for the opportunity to to make a difference in my hometown. I hope I can continue to do that. It's been a long, long, you know, I've spent my entire, pretty much, post-college adult life involved directly with issues in front of the city, and it's meant a lot to me to be able to do it. I especially want to thank James. James is a huge reason why this city works. I know that's a weird term, but you have no idea how complicated things are that you don't see. Watching council meetings is just seeing the tip of the tip of the iceberg, the rest of the gears that are grinding away on a day-to-day basis. It has truly been a pleasure to work with you, James. I've really enjoyed it. I think the city's in the the best spot it's been from its staff standpoint in a long time, and a lot of that has to do with his leadership, and I really appreciate that. Matt, same to you. I really appreciate working with you. You're a fantastic attorney. It's been really wonderful working with you. And to my fellow council members, I've known a lot of you for a long, long time. Bill, Randy, I've I've known and worked with, you know, from the Ojai Flow days. Souza ran against my dad when I was in high school for city council, believe it or not, back, I want to say, in 98-ish, right around there, maybe 98, 2000, or something like that. I remember being in a picture in the newspaper, wearing a T-shirt, going, "What is this for?" And he ended up losing to Souza, so it was a long time ago. And Mayor Betsy, congratulations on winning, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I look forward to seeing what you're gonna do the next two years, and thank you for everything that you've brought to us. So it's really been an honor, and I want to, not lastly yet, but I want to thank the public. I really appreciate all the input, all the people I've gotten to meet, all the different things I've been involved in. It's also been a pleasure, especially and I know Matt LeVere's here, our supervisor from the county. Today, we had our last air pollution, I had my last air pollution control district meeting. That is something that the city has to agree to kind of have you be a representative, and then you still have to go to another board to have them offer that to you. It's been a real pleasure being able to represent the City of Ojai, as as far as I know, the first council member from Ojai to represent our city on the air pollution control district board. So that's been a real pleasure, along with stints on VCOG and SCAG and all these other things that we do that a lot of you don't know about, but it's been a real pleasure to get an opportunity to do that. And then lastly, congratulations to the new council members. You guys, you know, it's it is you end up having to jump in with both feet, run in full speed. They don't brief you on a lot of stuff. I remember coming in my first meeting and going, "What? What? I have no idea." And I was like, "Wow, you know, I really actually kind of know more." I was happy I knew more about it from listening to my dad and being involved in stuff than I thought. But don't be afraid to ask questions. Remember that no matter how weird it feels, you know, do what you gotta do. Rely on James. Learn to meet the staff. Now that COVID's over, every once in a while, come to the building, walk through, say hi to everybody. It'll help you get your feet underneath you and meet everybody. And you gotta remember that this is just the board. The organization's much bigger, and the whole organization that is us is really the City of Ojai. So get out there and talk to people. That's one of the best ways to be a better council person. But I really thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for working with all of you, and it's been my pleasure, and I hope to see y'all around.
For Councilmember Wirick, over the last eight years, again, for I should take a step back. For all three council members, one of the things I always have to remind them is they're not supposed to be full-time council members, but but they've worked full-time with full effort. So Councilmember Wirick, over the last eight years, has helped or has provided leadership on many projects, including streamlining and reducing the costs of the city's second unit compliance program, which helps residents legalize second units. He's also provided leadership for pushing the city's accessory dwelling units beyond the state requirements, including last last year, or maybe it was the year before now, adopting our tiny home program. And those projects directly, you know, are trying to provide more housing options to our residents. Councilmember Wirick also was a key part of lifting the suspension on the enforcement of the of short-term rentals within the City of Ojai, provided leadership on installation of several traffic calming measures, advocated with Councilmember Haney for the reopening of the Ojai Valley Organics Collection Site at Baldwin Road, which we are hearing is moving forward and we should be hearing about shortly. He also led the effort to partner with the county on Sewell Park to enhance our parks and recreation programming and improve access to that facility. He was also part of the leadership team that helped the city exercise its standing in the City of Ventura water lawsuit and to help advance the overall Ojai Valley's interests in in that matter. He also initiated the hotel tax audits and sales tax audits for the cities, both of which have resulted in positive fiscal returns for the city. He backed and participated in improvements to Ojai's public arts ordinance and ordinances and procedures, led the effort to de-stigmatize and rationalize cannabis dispensary and manufacturing options, and one that I always get kind of get a kick out is he led the effort to adopt the beekeeping ordinance in the city. So that shows just the breadth of of topics that Councilmember Wirick worked on. Many of these examples also led to changes across the county, across the unincorporated area and other cities, and helped us serve as leaders for the the community on on several of these projects. So thank you again on behalf of the community and the staff, Councilmember Wirick, for your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks, James. Thank you, Bill, for your eight years of service. Clearly, you're an extremely hard-working person and inspiring about that. You possess an amazing ability to research the details of a topic, and this skill has so often helped the city and the city council make tough and necessary decisions. You know more acronyms than any other human being that I have ever come across. I don't know how you do it, but that's pretty amazing. So thank you very much for your dedication and service.
Well, thank you. What an honor to serve in this position of a city council person for eight years. And what a pleasure, you know, through all of the difference of of opinions, which we know is a very proud tradition in Ojai, to have. And the passion behind these disagreements or differences of opinion is because of how much this citizenry cares, how much we are so invested in the the character of this valley that needs to be protected and continued and managed into the future. So it's been an incredible honor. I I want to say just three, there's three areas that I think are so important that I think we organized a lot of our efforts. And one is that we are blessed with a staff that accepts and embraces what I would call active oversight on the part of the city council. There is a partnership we have in this culture in our community, in our governance culture, that is actually fairly rare. You see a lot of councils that really don't have the active inquiring mind that all of us have, and we have and have a staff that doesn't resist that, that actually embraces that, is is just wonderful. And and James and Matthew are are real treasures. I'm I'm so happy they're with us and want I hope we keep them happy to continue because it really is a great a great governance culture. So that active oversight part of our governance culture is really valuable. One of the anecdotes that I want to share real quickly is that if you go around to other council meetings and they say, "Well, how many people show up at your council meetings?" Cities that are 10 times the size of ours, bigger. I go, "We might get three or four people." You know, we get a level of citizenry engagement that's nowhere else in Ventura County. It's it's really wonderful. The other thing I think it's important to keep in mind, and the city manager, James, touched on it, is advocating for the whole valley. The structure of the Ventura County, recognizing each municipality within a larger area around it, to be an advocate in different levels for the the character of the valley. And it's important to take that seriously. Sometimes county planning in particular doesn't want to recognize that input, but we have done some things here that have shown a leadership that is really, as as city manager mentioned, have changed things. For example, we appealed some county planning actions on on oil and gas permitting that started a process of a broad questioning and review of of how things are done in all of Ventura County. And I think we should all be be proud of that. And that was a was a partnership with the citizens and and the council in doing that. So advocating for the Ojai Valley is important. For example, what was just mentioned about the organics getting reopening, that's outside of the city but important to the whole valley. So advocating for Ojai Valley is important, and I hope, you know, we keep that tradition going. And then, you know, how we evolve Ojai's character into sustainable design as we move forward, those things are all important. When we, for example, When we, for example, I was proud to be a key vote on upholding the principles of our Formula Business Ordinance. I believe in localism. That's, I think, part of sustainable design. When we look at everything from our, the, the, well, I'm also very proud of the fact that, yeah, I was, I was a critical, I think, vote on stopping the hollowing out of our community that we were experiencing with the, the short-term rental. And we, we stopped that. Those are all, you know, are outside our first microgrid on public land that we need to do more of. So these are all things that are, I think, examples of those three themes that I think are so important. Active oversight on the part of council, advocating for the whole valley, and, and managing and, and evolving our character in terms of sustainable design. So it's just been an honor. It's, it's hard to say how much I just feel so grateful to my colleagues, present and past, and how confident I am in the new council coming in that all these traditions will, the best traditions will continue. So thank you.
Mayor, I want to say something when Randy's done.
And Councilmember Haney, in addition to the accomplishments that was mentioned by James Beck earlier on, related to Gold Coast and their zero emissions plan, which we, we've been able to partner with them because of your advocacy. And so I wanted to start with that. But some of your other accomplishments over the last eight years include leadership advocating for the reopening of the Ojai Valley Organics Collection Site at Baldwin Road. But you uniquely were involved with that. I'll, I'll let you speak to it when you have a minute. But I, I believe you actually drove and found the person that is now going to reopen the site. Randy hunted him down and dragged him to Ojai Valley. So, so when I say leadership on that, it's physically. You also led the effort to open up Sewell Park with Councilmember Wierich for enhanced parks and recreation programming and improved access. You worked for years with both the Libby Bowl Committee and the Cultural Resources Committee to help provide support to each of those groups and leadership to help develop both the processes and procedures that are in place for, for Libby Bowl, working to get Sterling on board as part of that, as part of the bowl team, and working on regulations for cultural resources with representatives from, from all fields. You were part of the city's COVID recovery team that was working and regularly meeting with other, with businesses and others during the pandemic and the recovery. And you were a leader in the effort to use electric landscaping equipment. Again, I hope you speak to this, but I believe you drove to South Pasadena and found how to do that as well. So, so you're, you're walking the walk and not just talking the talk. So, and through that, the city was able to move forward with the, our gas engine prohibition. We became the second AGZA green zone city after South Pasadena. So that's just a, a brief list. But again, on behalf of the community and the staff, I want to thank you, Councilmember Haney, for all of your hard work over the last eight years.
Thank you, Randy, for your eight years of service. As we all know, serving on city council takes a considerable amount of time and requires a lot of homework, many, many binders. You are clearly passionate about and deeply committed to the community and to our shared neighborhood. Your dedication to the youth of Ojai and our parks is really admirable. I appreciated your desire to weigh both sides of an issue carefully. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Betsy.
So, you know, I said 10 minutes and it's been 25. So I'm going to, I'll be short. I don't, you know, 14, you know, it's, it's hard, you know. I'll tell you what, this is, it's been a roller coaster ride, I can tell you that much. First, you're winning, then you're tied, then you're winning, then you get a, a letter saying, you know, "Thank you for running a good race," and a concession. And then the county says, "Whoa, whoa, 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 we're not done counting." And then the county comes in and says, "Here's the final thing, Rachel Lang won." And you know what? God bless Ojai. Rachel Lang is going to be an asset to this community. Okay, I just want to start with that. I think it's, I think it's important. 14 years coaching at Nordhoff High School, eight years on recreation and parks, eight years on this council. I am blessed to live in this community and for this community to allow me to do what I've enjoyed doing over the last 28 years. So there's a lot of things that everyone has done that we've accomplished. I know at times it seems up here that we don't get along, but the reality is we do. And everyone that sits up here has the community at heart. And everyone that will sit up here will have the community at heart. And I think it's just important that we recognize that and that we give this council coming on and coming to and leading, we give them an opportunity to do that, and we support them. That's all I can say. I, you know, just thank you. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity. And it's been a incredible, incredible journey. Matt, thank you. James, thank you. Chief, thank you. Bill, eight wonderful years. Ryan, landscaped your home, I know you too long. Betsy's been my neighbor for 14 years, and we finally got to know each other up here. This young lady and I, you know, like I said, we've had some, the first time I spoke, I spoke against her. Because she wanted to ban leaf blowers, and it was like, "You're crazy, lady." And then here we are, how many years later, we're going to South Pasadena to figure out how to go all electric. Now, she wanted to ban blowers still, but it doesn't matter. We went a different route and we, and we won it together, didn't we? So again, I, we could sit here and speak forever. Counsel, I can tell you this much. You're going to come up here, you're going to read this book, and someone's going to get up there and say something, and you're going to go sideways. It just happens, so be prepared. Be prepared for anything and everything that this community can throw at you, because, because they will. So I'm going to end with that. Betsy?
I want to say something.
Thank you. Thank you for leading us for the last two years. Good luck. The rest of us will see each other around town. And thank you, community.
So I want to express my deep appreciation and gratitude for all three of you. And I have learned so much from you. Just, I think it's worth taking the time. And I don't think we should apologize that we're taking an extra half hour because you're, we're bringing up what the incoming council needs to know. And the most valuable thing I've learned from, I've been on this round of council service, it's been six years working with Councilmember Wierich, Blatts, and Haney. And I cannot believe how much my initial impression of all of you has grown and changed over those years. And the most valuable thing I have learned, and I wish that the public would learn to say as well, is that we should never vilify a council member for a difference of opinion. We need to acknowledge and see things from a broad perspective. And you have taught me that, and I wish the public would learn that as well. We can disagree because everything under the sun comes before us. It's like a marriage, we're committed to each other, to working together. But there's just no way we're going to agree on everything. And then when we leave the chamber and we come back to the next meeting, let us approach it fresh and not think back on the things that we, you know, so that we, we can, we, it's, it's a beautiful opportunity and a lesson to learn how to get along in spite of the things that we disagree on. And we will disagree. There's not, there's no way in heaven or hell that we're going to agree, that the incoming council members are going, and, and myself are going to agree on everything. And that just is, that's just the nature of, of living on the, on the planet. So, but I cannot, I know the many, many hours that you spend and devote to this as, because I do so myself, and I appreciate you all from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Especially Bill Wierich, I'm practically married to Bill.
Oh, oh.
No, 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 in the sense.
Uh-oh. My wife should.
Cynthia, Cynthia.
Cynthia, don't take that the wrong way now.
No, no, no. What I mean to say is, because of the Brown Act, we can often discuss items that we care about with one, only with one other council member. I worked with Councilmember Blatts on the cannabis, and we, we started working together on a number of things. But Bill Wierich, he was my, he lived, he was my neighbor. And I felt very aligned with him on many issues. We worked on the ATP together and, and, you know, it's just natural that you, because once we discuss a topic with one council member, we can't, you know, he would walk by, we'd start talking, and that would be it. So, you know, I couldn't discuss it with another council member. But that's what I meant by my previous statement. Yeah, you are a true friend. Thank you.
You are, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think Supervisor LeVere also had asked if, if, if he's still here, if he could say just a couple of words. Is now a good time?
Well, Mayor, Mayor Sticks, council members, Mr. Vega, thank you for allowing me the opportunities to come say a few words. I didn't want to miss this chance to come and say my thank yous. Councilmember Wierich, Councilmember Blatts, Councilmember Haney. I've gotten a chance to work with you in, in different arenas and not own the same arena at the same time. Councilmember Wierich, I get to work with you on the Ventura County Transportation Commission and all of the education you brought to regional transportation. As we look at this change from a level of service to vehicle miles traveled and all the intricacies involved with that, you've been a real leader on regional transportation issues. I've learned a lot from you, I want to let you know that. Ryan, we go way back, you know, and, you know, coming into my seat on the Board of Supervisors and getting on APCD, and you were the chair of the board, and I got to serve under you. And you taught me so much about air pollution control and the ways that really that board has impacted the air quality in Ojai over the past few years. A lot of that is because of your leadership. And Randy, I, I want to start off by saying your, your comments right now. Ms. Lang, in the election, you're, you're just a class act. I wish you could go to Arizona and, and teach them a lesson on how democracy's supposed to operate. And that, that really meant a lot to me, and that's what makes Ojai such a special place. And getting to work with you on Gold Coast Transit, and you've been such a leader as, as that district makes its transition to hydrogen fuel cell technology and moving to zero emission buses, a lot of that is because of your, your insight and your expertise. And you've been just a true champion at that board. It's been an honor to work with all three of you. And I hope the public knows how hard you work behind the scenes on issues. That's been mentioned. It was because of all of you. You impressed upon me the importance of Ojai Organics to the valley. And it was because of your proactive leadership that we were able to work together and get that permit expedited and get that business open. It's because of your hard work. And Sewell Park, it was because of your leadership that we were able to reimagine how Sewell Park operates and how it can better serve the residents of Ojai Valley. And it's all you. I hope you deserve, you deserve their credit, and I hope you get it. You've been exceptional leaders. It's been a true privilege to work with all three of you, and thank you. And I just want to welcome the new council members, Ms. Lang, Mr. Whitman, Ms. Rule. Obviously, Mayor, Mayor Sticks on your reelection. I look forward to working with all three of you. I want to introduce somebody, Clint Garmon, who some of you might know. Clint is new to my team, knows Ojai very well, has family up here. He's going to be handling Ojai issues for me. And so we'll be up here a lot, and I just want to make sure the public and the new council was able to see, put a face to a name. And I would just be remiss if, before I leave, I want to say a final thank you to Chief Rivera. My last couple of years, your service to the residents of Ojai Valley has been nothing short of exceptional.
That's right.
You are just a true leader in law enforcement and public safety. You have served this community so well, and I've just truly enjoyed working with you the past two years. And I wanted to make sure the public knew how much I appreciate all of your work and your support for Ojai Valley. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations to all the new council members.
Thank you, Matt. So plaque, plaque time.
Mayor, if I may.
We have to make a motion to accept this.
Mayor, excuse me. We also have Sarah Ruiz on behalf of the Office of Congresswoman Julia Brownlee.
Thank you, Weston.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Ruiz, and on behalf of Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, I would like to recognize Councilmember Haney, Councilmember Wierich, and Councilmember Blatts for their remarkable service to the city of Ojai. Congresswoman Brownlee has often said that it is, it is her greatest privilege to represent the people of the 26th Congressional District, which up until the start of the 118th Congress that will convene next month has included the city of Ojai. She has worked to move our communities forward and to do all that she can to improve the lives of all her constituents, and she has done that in partnership with all of you. You have helped maintain and expand the very aspects of the city that make Ojai a truly desirable place to live, work, and raise a family. The Congresswoman extends her sincere appreciation to Councilmember Haney, Councilmember Wierich, and Councilmember Blatts for their remarkable leadership and service over the years. In recognition of their immeasurable contributions, I am pleased to present the outgoing council members with certificates of congressional recognition on behalf of the Congresswoman. She'd also like to congratulate Mayor Sticks on her recent reelection, and she welcomes Leslie Rule, Rachel Lang, and Andrew Whitman to the council. The Congresswoman is also pleased to see Councilmember Francina continue to serve the residents of District Four. Councilwoman, Congresswoman Julia Brownlee would like to extend her sincere appreciation to all of you for working alongside her over the past several years to best serve the residents of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Let's get the deed done here. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I want to, I want to have the honor and the privilege of declaring the results of the Ojai Consolidated General Municipal Election and recognize as a certification. And Item G do approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations.
We going to leave or stay?
We're going to do plaques and photos.
Yeah, if everybody doesn't mind, we'd like to hand everybody their plaque.
I need to, I need to check the script.
What are you saying? I need to tell, I'm going to start crying.
What are we doing now? What, what are we doing now?
We're doing Item 2A recognition of the Alphons.
Do I just sit here?
You have to come up front and get one last picture.
Okay.
Are we all coming or what?
Yeah, we're out to die.
All five of you.
Oh, altogether.
Altogether in front of the diets?
Oh.
Yeah, I just want to see.
Oh, come on, just keep it away. Ooh, look at this, how we lined up, huh? Going to roll, going to roll?
Sing your praises.
Oh, yeah. Hold the plaques, please.
Thank you all. Anyone else?
Thank you all.
We done?
I think we are.
Okay, now we're in.
Thank you.
We're going to keep looking. You will? All right. Yep, we are. Hey, do we get to take our plaque?
Yep. I'm going to bring mine, too.
To be, they have to take the oath.
Them along with three other council members, and they made me promise I would run for office in April. And I said, "I can do the work, but I'm not a politician." They said, "Don't worry about it, nobody ever runs against a city clerk." Well, guess what? I was the test case, the first one in the history of Ojai. And it was not fun. So, I admire you people that just went through it. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Betsy Stick, do you solemnly swear, or, excuse me, affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the rest of you want to get sworn at?
No.
All of you at once, let's do it all, yeah. Yeah. Raise your right hand. Andrew Whitman, Leslie Rule, and Rachel Lang, do you affirm that you support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the rest of you want to get sworn at?
No.
All of you at once, let's do it all, yeah. Yeah. Raise your right hand. Andrew Whitman, Leslie Rule, and Rachel Lang, do you affirm that you support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are entering? Say, "I will."
I will.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. And Andrew. And Steve Olson bailed out on us. But I will catch him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia, and thank you, congratulations, council members. We will take a 10-minute break and enjoy some cupcakes and festivities, so thank you.
Okay, we are going to come back with the new council members. Take position. Okay, we're back. Welcome, new council members. Really wonderful to have you here. Welcome back, Souza. And let's get going. We're going to move on to item number three. Nomination and election of mayor pro tem. James, do you have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very brief. Each year, the city council chooses from one of its members, a person to serve as mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem acts in the absence of the mayor. The mayor typically is the person responsible for presiding at city council meetings and representing the city at ceremonial and civic events. And the mayor pro tem essentially is the person who would back up the mayor if the mayor is unable to attend any of those things and be a backup for executing documents and things of that nature. So tonight, we're recommending with the reordering of the council that the council select a new mayor pro tem for a one-year term of office here in the city of Ojai.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council?
How does one make a nomination?
So our process has been that the mayor asks for a nomination by motion from any members of the council. Nominations cannot be accepted from members of the public. It's from a member of the council. The mayor will ask for a second to confirm the nomination. If there is a second, the matter is open for discussion. If there is no second, another nomination is made. And then after discussion, a vote is taken. So it's...
Very good. Weston, any public comment on this item?
No.
All right, let's move on to council discussion. Well, do you want to have a nomination first?
Sure. I mean, I think the logical choice is I nominate Souza. Since we're all new council members here, except for Souza, it seems to me that that would be a logical choice if she so wanted to do that, as one who probably knows procedure best so far.
Is there a second? We need a second.
I was going to nominate councilman member Whitman. And at the same time, I understand that because of his experience as a lawyer, as an attorney and...
Microphone?
Because of his experience as an attorney...
You're going to push the button?
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Because of his experience as an attorney and the skills that he brings. And at the same time, I understand your... I understand why Souza would be a logical choice.
May I say something? It's a tradition that's rotated on an annual basis since 1984, and you do not need a legal background to be... I don't even expect Mayor Stix to miss a meeting. I would like to be mayor pro tem.
Okay, we have two nominations. Do we have a second?
So, James or Matt, is there any precedence about who typically moves into the mayor pro tem?
There's no current precedence in terms of that. Some cities have a rotation. We have it as an annual basis, and it does usually change around once a year, but there's no set rotation. Some cities will apply a rule that it's based on the number of votes received for those who were all elected at large. Of course, we have districts, so that's a little bit different because the districts don't all have the same participation rates. There's no hard precedent in the city that governs.
And just a note, there are a lot of events that I'm getting asked to attend and speak at, and ceremonies, sometimes two a day, so whoever it is has to be prepared and have the time and the interest really to go to travel sometimes and go to these events. Okay?
I'll just say that I don't object to being mayor pro tem, and I also do not object to Souza being mayor pro tem, so...
Then I would like to change my vote to second the motion to have Souza step into that role.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Congratulations, Souza. Look forward to working with you. More.
Okay, great. All right, we will move on.
The next item is item number five, the second reading and adoption of a holdover ordinance.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but so we do have a... It's a strange agenda because of the reorganization, so apologies if it throws anybody off. We have a second consent calendar, which we normally do not have.
Oh, yes, you're right.
It's listed as items four A through G. We've recommended approval of those items. The council can approve those all at once or can pull any items if they wish to discuss them further.
Thank you, James. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I would like to pull... I'll make a motion to approve, but I'd like to pull item G.
G, okay. And do we have a second to approve the rest?
Item G.
I'll second that. So all in favor of everything on the consent calendar except item G?
So I just have a question because I don't have an A in my... I start with B.
A is the waiver of... It's essentially agreeing to waive the reading of the full ordinances. So it's not a separate item. It's agreeing to waive the reading in full of all of the items, essentially.
That's correct. The staff report, the text for item A is only stated on the agenda because it's just that sentence, waiver of reading in full of any law ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you. So a motion to approve, Souza, and I'll second that. So everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then Souza, you want to talk about G?
But first, I want to talk about this chair. It's too low. I feel like a little kid. Somebody taller of us has sat in it. Well, no, I don't... You know, I can live with it. I don't want you to be shrunk. Yeah, no, but maybe it can be fixed.
We'll adjust it next week.
Yeah, next time, yeah. No, you don't have to change. Okay, let me gather my thoughts. I thought we should do a little bit of review because the three incoming council members were not here when this was first approved over a year ago. It was adopted October 12, 2021. And I don't know if you had a chance to review it. I wanted to take a couple of things that are related to this that the public has asked about. People have asked, for example, how has the pilot... The tiny house pilot program that was also adopted about a year ago, one year... It was a one-year pilot program, ten applicants a year for two years, is my recollection. So I don't know if you're prepared to give a short report on that, and then I'll go to the other things.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll give a little bit of background on the housing element, and then I will give the short report on the pilot project. The housing element is a component of the city's general plan. The city's general plan is outdated at this point. We are working on a huge project to update the general plan. The housing element is one part of the general plan, but it's a very important part. It's actually the only part that is then reviewed and certified by the State Department of Housing. So it actually serves a... It's uniquely important in that general plan document. And so the other challenge, because we have to certify that with the state, is that it has a separate timeline. So that's why it's separate from the rest of the general plan at this point. Last year, there was a deadline to adopt the general plan by each city by the end of October in 2021. The city adopted its housing element at that time, sent it to the state, and then the state sent it back with comments, which is not unusual. I think every city in the county had theirs sent back with comments. So far, two cities, I think it was Oxnard and I don't remember the second, have sent changes back to the state with minor modifications in response to those comments and have now been certified. We will be the third to send them back, and hopefully we will be certified as well. The other six haven't sent them back yet, or the other cities haven't sent them back yet. And so this is us making those minor modifications in response to the state comments. And so then to speak to Councilmember Francina's question, the pilot tiny house project, yes, we adopted a one-year pilot project where we were allowing up to, I believe it was 10 tiny homes per year. We have had, I believe, three serious inquiries from residents about installing the tiny homes. Out of those three, only one has actually proceeded and is in process. The other two did not. I think one of the concerns when we adopted that project was that some of the requirements made the tiny homes more expensive than I think people realized, things like adding decking around the tiny homes and things like that. And so part of the idea of creating the one-year pilot project is at the end of the year, we'd come back and report to council and see if it's working or not. So we do have that on our list to return to council early next year with that annual report, and I don't expect it will change much from the report I just gave you, but hopefully we'll see more than one by that time, so...
Okay, so may I ask? So you're saying that this will automatically come back at the beginning of next year because the year has passed, and then we can look at the obstacles?
Yes.
Because it seems like by now there should be more than one, so we can do that.
Correct. So it is scheduled to return. Now, I don't want to say it's the first meeting because we have about 15 time-sensitive things that we're trying to coordinate, but it's scheduled to return early in 2023.
Okay, so... Is things like... There are, you know, we're in a housing emergency. And the housing element is a planning document. And in fact, there's a sentence on page two that said we're underneath fiscal impact. I don't know why this is under fiscal impact, because it says, "Approval of the housing element meets state requirements but does not obligate the city to build affordable housing units. Instead, it requires the city to plan for their share of affordable housing units." And I just find that such a strange, contradictory, unproductive statement. So perhaps we could... You could comment on that.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to respond to is the question everybody always asks is, once we adopt that housing element, we have to build these units? And how do we pay for these units? And so what that statement was trying to say is that the document doesn't mean that the city itself is going to go build those units. It doesn't mean we have to figure out how to pay for those units. It means that the city's planning in those areas identified to... For housing, and a lot of it's going to be done via, you know, property owners who then want to come in and develop, you know, put the housing in those locations, or it's partnerships, but it's not the city's sole responsibility to actually build the housing.
I do understand that, but that's the part I find so strange. So it's somewhere else in this document. I believe it lists the agencies we can partner with. And, you know, Whispering Oaks has at least a five-year waiting list. At the beginning, as most of you know, I've been looking for housing now for over a year, and it has to be in District Four. And I can tell you, there is absolutely nothing, nothing, N-O-T-H-I-N-G. Few times I've gotten excited. I found something in the 3,800 range that was a house that I could even share because it had two bathrooms, three bedrooms. It was gone in an hour, you know? So, you know, so we are in a... We have to take this seriously. There is a father living in a tent, and it's too cold for his eight-year-old daughter when she comes to visit. And he's looking for some place where he can spend, you know, he's got shared custody. And, I mean, I could give so many examples. We are now sending our seniors that have lost housing to Fillmore, where they have affordable apartments. So I just want the public to know that the council is aware of this, and I hope that in the future, we can have some kind of housing committee where we bring all the different opinions together, the people who have been advocates for years and the people who have objected to housing for years. We need to bring those two parties together and have a productive plan for Ojai, a plan that works.
So I have a quick question, if I can. What would be the process or procedure for doing that? Suppose that the council agreed that we wanted to bring together some sort of housing task force, you know, and a wide spectrum, all stakeholders. What would be the process for that?
Two... Either the mayor or two council members can place an item to do so on a future agenda. But, you know, one of the things... This item is particularly about adopting the minor revisions to the housing element.
Yeah.
So it's not this item, we can't take other housing-related actions.
Okay.
But later in the meeting, in the open session portion, there's the future agenda items line. That's the opportunity for the mayor or two to make a request for something like that, a housing task force, to return to a future council agenda.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to ask... So from what I understand, it's not... To the point that Souza was making under fiscal impact, it's not just an intention to do this. It is the state will be looking for us to fulfill what we have said that we will do, not just to intend to do what we said we would plan to do. Is that correct? I mean, they're looking to us to do it.
There's... They have no mandate on the city to actually build units. The mandate is for the city to plan for units.
The additional mandate is for the city, under the affirmatively furthering fair housing component, for the city to remove city-imposed barriers to housing. Land cost is not a city-imposed barrier. Development cost is not a city-imposed barrier. Elements of our codes, for example, that may restrict housing could, could, might be city-imposed barriers. And so the affirmatively furthering fair housing component of the housing element requires us to look at and assess those barriers, as shown in the document. But there is no state mandate as of yet for the city to build housing.
Okay.
That may change in the future, but that is not currently the mandate.
Okay, so we can have a deeper discussion, but for right now, you'd like to limit it to approval on the minor revisions or clarifications that the state has asked for. to approval on the minor revisions or clarifications that the state has asked for? Okay.
Correct. Thank you.
And I'll just comment that I think maybe it's useful to understand that, that this body does not have control over bringing forward housing projects. We only have the power to assess them when they come to us. And that's why it really can't be a mandatory provision. It's just that we need to have our plan developed in such a way as to make it possible for those projects to be considered by us. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair summary of the law. And the one point to note is the council could choose to use city resources to go further, but there it's a matter of a budget policy and fiscal decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the council could decide to have a more stringent approach to housing if they so chose, but it is not mandated by this particular housing element.
Correct. Nor is it mandated by the state.
That's what I mean, yes.
The state hasn't yet seized control of the city's fiscal funds. Those still remain under the council's control. I, I say that partially in jest and partially because the reality is the state, as, as I have been over the last several years, is being more and more and more aggressive in removing local control over housing in an attempt to meet the state's defined housing goals.
Especially if the, the city is not moving forward in a way that they perceive to be in good faith.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Thank you.
So, so the council, under future agenda items, at the end of the meeting, either after this meeting or a future meeting, can ask for a task force, you know, some, we'll call it something. And to be included in that could be a, an in-depth report on properties that the city owns, a previous, the history of previous attempts, history of agencies that want to work with us, including the one that we gave $50,000 to in the county agency, so that the new council and us can be reminded that there are resources. That's what we're going to ask at the end of the meeting.
Very good.
I think. Thank you.
Good, Souza?
Yes, thank you.
All right, perfect.
All right, so make a motion to approve?
To approve that. Yeah, Weston, is there any public comment on the consent?
Yes, we have a raised hand from Bill Miley. Let's bring him in and see if he wants to speak on this item or item five.
Thank you.
I'm sure I want to speak. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, Bill. Would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, he does.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Because this has not been presented to the Planning Commission, I request it be referred to the Commission for a complete review. My reasons. Skipping such a step seems confusing. The only city value statement includes being transparent. And there was plenty of time to do this. The state response with the questions came to the city in January of this year. I know this step is a regular administrative process for state housing cycles. With this element being the only element of the general plan requiring State of California approval, how we respond to it, to the questions the state asked, is a very important step. I reviewed the, this concept housing element document. There are at least 33 narrative responses that we, that was prepared by the city manager and the planning director. In my opinion, only the citizens-appointed Planning Commission can determine whether they are minor modifications, end quote, and be able to see their impact on our city. I suspect there is a, quote, "deadline" nearby pushing this action. Please do not break proper government, community participation. The housing element, which will guide us for eight years, is much too important than meeting a submission deadline. Please refer to the Planning Commission for review and public activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, is there a motion to approve item G?
May I ask for, for a comment, a brief response to Bill's request?
Sure. Yeah, a couple of points. One, and I, I saw Mr. Miley's comments earlier and I started to type a response and never got back to my computer, so. But I noticed in the written comment and also here, he mentions that it should be reviewed by the citizens-appointed Planning Commission. I just wanted to remind everybody, the Planning Commission's not appointed by citizens. The council members are elected by citizens. The Planning Commission is appointed by the council members. And so the housing element was taken through the Planning Commission several times in up to October of 2021. We, they certified and then we went to the council, the council certified. And then all we are doing at this point is responding to the feedback and the questions that the state asked. And so I do not, at this point, recommend delaying the project or taking additional time to then go back to the Planning Commission at this point. So I recommend that the city council approve the housing element.
Thank you, James. Any other?
I'll make a quick comment. My understanding is that there is an imperative to have an approved housing element and that there is no impediment to going back to specific items within the housing element and having it reconsidered and that that probably would flow through planning, although it would depend on a case-by-case basis.
Correct.
And that that would be the way that I would suggest we proceed in adopting this today. And then if there is a need to bring things up, that we do that on a item-by-item basis.
Thank you. And if I could just note, the, yes, there's a couple of imperatives with adopting the housing element. One is that agencies that don't adopt housing elements are disqualified from certain grant types, which could have a major impact on the city. The other is potential loss of local control over regulation. I think both of those things, to, to the point Councilmember Whitman made, we can accomplish the same thing by adopting it and then asking the Planning Commission to review it once it's certified. So I, again, we recommend to adopt the, the housing element.
Thank you, James. Well, I would like to make a motion to approve item G.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the public hearing. Item number five, that's the second reading and adoption of a holdover ordinance to maintain the city's fire hardening amendments. James, we have a staff report?
Thank you. Yes, so this is the second reading. So I apologize for the timing of that because it is a little funky. We had the first reading a month ago and now the second reading tonight. But it's actually similar to the last item, the housing element, in a lot of ways. Every three years, the state adopts an updated building code, the California Building Code. And every three years, the city has to adopt an updated building code with any city-specific amendments. Otherwise, the city would risk losing its amendments. And so in the last cycle, the city adopted several additional items to the building code, that we adopted several fire hardening requirements, and we also adopted the existing reach code. So theoretically, if we did not adopt an updated building code by January 1st, we would lose these city-specific items. So we are recommending adopting the building code now. In the meantime, we have gone to the Building Appeals Board to, to start a separate review process, much like the one that Mr. Miley just recommended for the housing element. So we are doing that process for this so that we can come back and make any further adjustments. My understanding is the Building Appeals Board has recommended a couple of additional adjustments. But in the meantime, adopting this ordinance tonight will keep our existing amendments that are above and beyond the code in place. So we recommend adopting this item tonight and we'll, if that is done, we will plan to bring back the Building Appeals Board's recommendations early next year.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council?
Just to clarify, because the building code is being updated January 1st, 2023, in order to have the fire hard, I guess I'm doing a Randy restate, in order to have the fire hardening included in that, we need to pass it. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And if I could have a question for clarification? And so we would be able to go back and amend reach codes if we, if we choose to, to, to revisit those?
Yes.
Yes, for sure.
Great. We will go ahead and open the public hearing. We have a comment from Wayne Maynard.
Welcome the council members. My name's Wayne Maynard. I'm a resident of Ojai. I'm retired from the Fire District for 36 years. I spent a big part of my career doing fire prevention work, developing national building codes and fire codes. And so I take this issue pretty important to me. It's kind of one of my things. And so I'm speaking to encourage you to vote yes on this because I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Ojai Valley Fire Safety Council. And we currently have a, a project going on, on doing some fire hardening in the community. But this, this ordinance will continue the work that we've put in for many years now to add some local amendments to make our local building code a little more restrictive than what the minimum standards are of the state. And so by approving this ordinance, it's going to continue those amendments so that they can still be enforced after January, when the new building code comes out from the state. So it is a very important issue and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Weston, any comments online?
No raised hands for item five.
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and close the, the public hearing and we'll move on to council discussion.
Before you close, am I to assume that our building code staff doesn't have anything to say? Is that correct?
I think he's giving a thumbs up.
Hello, may I hear if there's any questions?
Okay.
Danny? He's available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we will move on to the discussion. Well, clearly, we, we want to approve this.
I think so.
I will go ahead and make a motion, unless somebody has something to say, to approve the, the adoption of the holdover ordinance to maintain the city's fire hardening amendments.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, we will move on now to council member reports. Anyone have anything to report at this beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, Souza?
I've got a whole long list, but I won't report all of them. You know, we haven't met for eight weeks now, or it's been a long time.
Six weeks.
Six weeks. I hope we never do that again. It just felt, it started to feel really weird. So it's been called to my attention that the electric bikes and all these different hybrids are now going up to 40 miles per hour. And we need to perhaps reconsider some of our things that we are, have in place, our plans to make Ojai bicycle-friendly. But it was reported to me, somebody almost got hit on the trail. And I'm just, wanted to make council aware of that. And I hope that you're all looking often, you can stand on the corner of North Signal and Matilla House Street if you want to see, get a good look at all the alternative vehicles. I'm seeing people going straight up North Signal Street on a, you know, they're standing on this, they're not doing anything. It's just like, what's the word, an escalator. Vroom. Yeah, yeah. And so we're going to see more and more of those. So I've been, you know, trying to implement the Complete Streets Plan for almost 30 years now. So I hope this council, at this point in time, where we're so concerned about climate change and pollution, et cetera, that will get really, really serious. And I want to make sure over the holidays that you take a good look at the Complete Streets Plan. And I'm sure you can get a hard copy. And then just want to report, I did send out a letter, an email on the progress, it's not of the Miners Oaks Park. I'm so impressed with how they're working with the county. And, you know, as we move forward with working with Soul Park, that's encouraging to see. We might be able to use the Nancy Rep Fountain for that park. Do you know, you know what I'm talking about? The Miners Oaks Park? So that, that's, they're, they're moving forward with that. And what else do I have here? I think that's all on, oh, I met with the new Humane Society, Eric Knight. He's the new executive director. He's got wonderful plans for the Humane Society. And both are, both the Ventura County Humane Society and the Ventura County Animal Services are moving forward with big plans for improving the conditions there, both for the visitors and the animals. So that's, I'm the, I've been the liaison to Ventura County Animal Services for six years now, so it's good, good to see that.
Thank you, Souza. I'm sure we, at the next meeting, will have more to report. Can we move on to the city managers' report?
Just a couple of quick things. One is, I believe we put a copy of the official Ojai Community Disaster Guide in front of each seat as, as we were changing seats. We are moving forward with that. We had adopted that a meeting or two ago and we are launching that and taking that out to local businesses, taking it out to the Chamber of Commerce and others. We also have copies available here at City Hall for anybody who's looking for a copy, so look for those. We also just completed the pergola repair, which was long overdue. It had needed some repair from some wood rot and was starting to, to get pretty worn down, so we just completed a, a major repair of the pergola. So we just wanted to announce that. And if people were wondering why there was some fencing and everything up around it for a couple of weeks, it was interesting, we made clear that they had to save all the wisteria. And so they literally got a crane and tied a belt around the wisteria and pulled it up and then replaced the wood underneath. So it gave us a heart attack a couple of times, but, but so we completed that. And then the other good news is we got good news on three of our grant applications. Our electric vehicle charger grant got approved. That was approved a couple of months back here at council. It was approved at council, now it was approved by the agency who funds it. We also had the bike rack grant get approved, so we are ordering all those bike racks that we had talked about. Those both got approved, I think it was about 10 days ago. And then we were just notified prior to the, to the meeting, actually, that we had a big, big approval on the ATP grant. The first phase of funding was approved, apparently, within the last couple of days. And so they're going to be doing some press releases on that project and talking about how this is a big award for a small city to do bicycle repairs. So apparently, I was notified that they already talked to NPR, so anybody who heard it there. But that project is ongoing. We'll have a council meeting about that, but the grant allocation was approved, apparently, within the last couple of days, so.
Great news, James. Really, a lot of progress. So thank you so much. And this is what happens when we don't have a meeting, you do all this work, right? So thank you. And I also want to say this is a really beautiful document, the disaster guide, and a huge step forward for Ojai. And so I'm really grateful to you and staff and to all the entities who worked on it because it was definitely a group effort, so thank you.
May I ask a question before we move on? You know, a lot of the public thinks that the ATP is done on Maricopa Highway. I think we absolutely need to have a meeting, some kind of progress report, so that they realize it's just in, what's the word, in limbo.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the project that's there, just as a reminder, everybody, was the demonstration project. And the design has changed pretty significantly from what was demonstrated. Because of the demonstration, we saw where things were not working. So what's there is not what the final design is. And so we're planning And so we're planning to have a meeting in January. There's a lot of decisions that need to be made. There's a lot of work still left to do on that project. So that one is probably going to be one of those meetings where we're going to have just one or two items, so we're able to focus on it. So we'll do that in January.
Great, great.
Great. Okay. And we will move on to future, oh, do you want to say something?
Can I ask councilmen, since we're all new? If you could, when you want to speak, just raise your hand and just bring it back to the chair, just so we can run as an efficient meeting as possible. So, Leslie?
Yes. Is there any way, or does it make sense to involve the community at this point in, you know, deciding the next steps for the ATP? Or does it make more sense to get some sort of, you know, both literally and figuratively roadmap of some sort? I just know that it's a very contentious issue. And we really, there's a strong feeling both ways. So maybe to bring the community along sooner rather than later might be, we're thinking about, is, seems an idea.
So that's certainly doable, as the council may direct. Not on tonight's agenda, so I'll ask the other council members not to discuss the ATP further. But when it returns to the council early in the new year, one of the, the staff will provide an update on where we are as of now, including the new grant approved a couple of days ago. And then the council can direct the next steps going forward, which would include creating some kind of a community feedback-type process, or keeping it a council, or some, or all of the above. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Is the next step going to include a feedback from a traffic engineer about where we are on redesign?
Yes, I think the next meeting that we're going to have on it, we started to kind of work on it and plan it already. It's going to be trying to basically recap what's been done to now, where we're at now. We'll have the engineer, here, there is an engineer who works on the design. They'll be able to answer questions. We'll talk about things like the right-of-way considerations that are going on. We'll talk about what grants have been awarded, what grants are still pending. So it'll, the intention will be, it'll be kind of a, just a complete recap, summary. Obviously, it'll be at a council meeting, a public meeting. The public can come give feedback, input, and then we'll have some decisions to make. So we'll plan to do that, like I said, at one of the early meetings in Jan, one of the January meetings, to try to do that sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to future agenda items. Anyone have a future agenda item?
Yes. When can we expect to bring back the cannabis lounges?
I think we did start to kind of fill in the meetings, and I think we were looking at that item being February. Obviously, if the council decides something should be moved up and something else should be moved back, that's within council's purview. But right now, just based on the items that are critical and have deadlines, and then that's kind of in that early February timeline right now.
Mayor, may I comment for the new members? That was an item that was decided that we would make final decisions with the new council seated. So it was an unfinished item, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that's it for future agenda items.
So is this the time to propose anything?
Well, and you need two people, yep.
Anything within the council's power.
Yeah, if anybody seconds it, then it potentially. I'd like to see staff give the council recommendations, pros, cons, and alternatives on rent stabilization. Kind of a comprehensive thing, not necessarily an advocacy thing, but what's available to us as options legally, and really to kind of maybe open it up to public discussion through that. But I would like to, you know, get your feedback for us.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I thought I heard a couple yeses there, so, okay, we'll proceed with that.
Okay.
And so.
Will do.
Rachel?
Yes, in light of what we discussed earlier, I would like to motion to put, creating a housing committee on a future agenda.
Second that. Okay. Anything else, council?
Yeah, no, we don't necessarily have to mention things that we expect January or February, but I definitely want to strengthen the STR ordinance. I don't forget to mention that.
Got it.
On that one, we have a draft ordinance in process that went to the planning commission a little while ago. I forget the precise date.
Yeah.
That will strengthen the STR ordinance. So that's already in process to coming back to council. Timing to be determined.
And perhaps in January, we can have a list of things that have been in progress, like the business ordinance, the chain store.
Formula business.
I think that's been going on quite a while. So we'll bring that.
And I don't mean to spoil the surprise, but James and I, we are working on some kind of workshop at some point, so.
Yeah, so.
Get all the ideas out.
I think in the first meeting in January, we're going to have an item to talk about if the council wants to hold a goal-setting workshop and the specifics of how we'd like to hold that, which will also be a great meeting to then kind of work through the list of priorities. So.
Thank you. All right, well, we are going to move to closed session. So thank you all for hanging in there and being here and supporting us. And congratulations once again to the new council members, and we are adjourned.
And we're adjourning in the closed session on two items. Existing litigation, Simply Ojai v. City of Ojai, case number pending assignment. And Santa Barbara Channel Keeper versus SWRCB, City of Santa Monica Ventura versus Abbott, LA Superior Court. No reportable action is expected. Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
Even with all the